Now I'll call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's come out for the meeting tonight. I know some of you have come out for some of the presentations. I also want to welcome those that are watching the meeting on G10 television. To begin the meeting with the night, I'm going to ask one of our Eagle Scouts, Mr. Cody McElroy, if you would come up front, please. Cody, thank you for coming out tonight. I'll tell you a little bit about this young man right here. I do want to recognize our Eagle Scout Cody McElroy of Troop 446 from Cape Codaret for his volunteer work to the city of Jacksonville. For his Eagle Scout project, Cody completed extensive research into the history of the caboose that we have down at the depot in downtown at Riverwalk Park. And he learned through his research that the caboose was built in 1953 for the Atlantic and East Carolina Rail Company at the New Bern Rail Yard. Cody was also able to identify the original color of the caboose. Everybody thought a caboose was red, well, this caboose was orange. That's the original color. And also the original number, which is 309. Cody then spent countless hours working on this caboose, sanding it, and repainting all the interior walls, the ceilings, and floors of the caboose. And you can see, yeah, what a lot of work. That's a big project. And you can see in these before and after photographs that are being shown on the wall up here, you can see all the work, his hard work, that went into this and made such a difference in how that looks down there. And there'll be many, many visitors that'll come down to that depot, you know, for all the many events that are at the Riverwalk Park, and will see your handiwork in bringing that caboose back to life. So on behalf of the City Council, I want to commend Cody for his volunteerism and thank him so much for the service to this city of Jacksonville and our citizens. And I am so honored with what you have done. I'm going to ask you as an Eagle Scout if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Now I'd have everyone to stand, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as always, we talk to give you thanks.
To give you thanks for this day, to give you thanks for the privilege of living in this city and all the blessings you bestow upon us individually and collectively as citizens of Jacksonville. We remember tonight the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. We give thanks for his life and for his service to our country, and we pray that we may honor his memory by continuing to find ways to serve others and living in civility and leaving a legacy of a positive influence on our city and our community. We pray for our military members who are serving us here and around the world. We pray for their anxious families. And as always, we pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction would be with them. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Cody? Counsel, at this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Shall we move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion here? None? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? We do have an agenda. And we're going, I'm going to come down front, and we're going to do a few presentations this evening. For our first presentation tonight, I'd like to ask all those that have, on the holiday decor contest, all those who've come to be recognized tonight, if you would join me up front here. The Jacksonville Environmental and Appearance Advisory Committee has sought to recognize outstanding holiday decorations in our city as part of the Clean and Green Gold Star Award Program. This year, the entire committee was invited to help judge the contest. They loaded on a bus and supplied with a lot of hot chocolate and eggnog, that's a non-alcoholic eggnog. And well ushered, well ushered about the city, and the committee elected to give several awards this year. Here we have on our screens here, you'll see some of the decorations.
221 Yale Circle, Gold Star Professional Plus Award, the home of Donald and Sonia Wolf. Family members at this home added to the professional trimming, giving it a great Christmas flavor. This home welcomes Christmas visitors like a cup of hot chocolate. 840 Gum Branch Road, Gold Star Best Family Classic Decor Award, home of the Reynolds family. Certainly a family tradition, the adult, children, and grandchildren of the resident vowed to continue decorating this well-known home along Gum Branch Road. Returning each year, the family deck the home in a variety of lights, traditional to the multi-year tribute this has become. This famous picket front porch is home to ferns, lights, and decorations, with a nativity, merry-go-round, and lighted fences completing the display. 203 Audubon Drive, Gold Star Griswold Worthy Award, the home of Charles and Deborah Miller, 2016 winners. This second-time winner left the judges looking for the proverbial kitchen sink in this heavily-populated display. It has several competing Santas, a nativity, angels, toy soldiers, and even the Rice Krispie Elves. Candy canes are covered with lights. Huge bulbs hang around the yard. A tree arch welcomes guests, and a gingerbread house leaves little room for the side yard decorations, and our national flag is proudly lit. South Side Dunbar Lane Neighborhood, the Gold Star Neighborhood Collaboration Award. While 100 Dunbar Lane can be seen from Dewitt Street, the best view is from Dunbar, of the four homes that look like one cohesive design. Each has its own flavor, but they are more alike than different. Neighbors said they copied each other and have created a design style that leaves little undecorated. Trees, bushes, doors, windows, and even the mailboxes are lit. And at the end of the court, Santa rides a motorcycle in front of a gingerbread-style home. 605 River Street, Gold Star Nostalgia Award, the home of David and Eileen Gaudette. Santa waves from the front seat of a classic red 1953 Chevrolet pickup truck, giving a ride to Frosty in this memory lane display. Santa's truck even has four wreaths on the sides and a wreath on the front. A towering Christmas light tree, Christmas deer, and classic decorations finish off this very special display. 503 Doris Avenue, Gold Star Best Animated Classic Decor Award, the home of Brian Kirby Mitchell's. This home features classic white lights. Deer, dogs, bears, and other animals move, and the festive and well-populated front yard is a tradition for many to see in Northwoods. 106 Gene Circle, the Gold Star Best Quaint Presentation Award, the home of Lee Monarch and Ray Kennedy. Decorations at this cottage-style home fit and make a complete presentation. Wreaths on the windows, light garland on the railing, fairy lights scaling up small trees, and colored lights festively adorn the white picket fence, making this a quaint presentation.
Good job, folks, by the way. Way to keep that holiday spirit.
Thank you.
We also have the Dunbar, folks from Dunbar Lane. Is anyone here from the Dunbar Lane? Okay. We'll make sure they get it. Thank you very much again for. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Mike Canaro, Director of Public Safety, and any members that you have present that you wish to join you up front that worked on your...
We have...
Okay. Very good. Well, who's minding the store then? Thank y'all for coming out tonight. The Jacksonville Public Safety 911 Communication Center was selected for accreditation during the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Fall Conference held November 12, 2017. During the conference, the Commission reviewed and voted on candidate agencies for accreditation and recognition of their 911 communication centers. Jacksonville Public Safety's 911 Center was selected for public safety communications The CLEIA Public Safety Communications Accreditation Program provides a communications center or the communications unit of a public safety agency with a process to systematically review and internally assess its operations and procedures. Since the first CLEIA Communication Accreditation Award was granted in 1999, the program has become the primary method for a communications agency to voluntarily demonstrate its commitment to excellence. CLEIA accreditation strengthens an agency's accountability, both within the agency and the community, through a continuum of standards that clearly define authority, performance, and responsibilities. This is Jacksonville Public Safety's first public safety communications accreditation. The agency received their first law enforcement accreditation in 1991 and has maintained accreditation status since that time. Jacksonville Public Safety is one of the only agencies in North Carolina to have accredited police and fire departments and now an accredited 911 communication center. Congratulations. I know it was a team effort. All of you, all of you working together. Let's drag this over here where we get everybody involved. Don't let me block you out.
That's okay.
Good job. Again, like I said, I know it's a team effort. Thanks, everybody. Hey, look, I was one of the accreditation managers at the county accreditation. All right, let's do this. Mayor, I'm going to have you stand to the side. Couple of the ladies. There you go. And then you stand up here. No, I'm just trying to get everybody in the right picture. Good. Mayor standing here with them. You're there. You got good pictures now? Can you, got a wide angle? Vince?
I'll be one, two, three. One more, one, two.
Good job.
Thank you.
Very proud of you. Stacy Lible, Lieutenant Stacy Lible, I know you're here. Yep, Amanda, or Vanessa Smith. And you'll have to identify everybody else.
And Angela Mark from First Baptist Church.
Okay.
And Angie from Finance. She was our treasurer.
Where is Angie? She hiding back there. National Night Out brings communities together nationwide to promote police-community crime-prevention efforts. The National Association of Town Watch has selected the city of Jacksonville as a national award winner for 2017 National Night Out held August 1, 2017. This is the ninth consecutive National Night Out Award for Jacksonville. The 2017 National Night Out, held at Riverwalk Park in downtown, hosted over 12,000 people and was a resounding success. And look, I know that y'all put a lot of work into this and really appreciate the effort because it really is a big deal in this community, okay? That a lot of people look forward to every year. I know our city manager looks forward to going down there and cooking. Hot dogs and hamburgers. Anyway, it's a great event. It gives, it gives our public, our public safety agencies an opportunity to interact with the people that live in this community and gives it a little personal touch, be able to, to actually know some of your law enforcement folks and to understand a little bit about what their job is. But it's a very nice award. And I'm giving it to you.
Chief?
Thank you so much for your efforts in keeping our National Night Out alive and growing in Jacksonville. Thank you very much. Too much. At this time, it's a great honor to do a promotion of a very worthy person, and I'm going to ask Jerry Hardison. And you have some of your family members with you tonight. I'll say a few things first. Jerry Hardison is a Jacksonville native. He grew up in the Half Moon area, graduating from Jacksonville High School in 1981. He began his fire service career at age 15 as a volunteer for the Half Moon Fire Department. After working in the private sector, Chief Hardison began his professional fire service career with the Jacksonville Fire Department in 1993, serving as a firefighter. I remember that. Since that time, he was, has served as a firefighter, a driver operator, captain, platoon training officer, battalion chief, division chief of operations, and deputy chief. He holds an associate degree in fire science from Coastal Carolina Community College and a bachelor's degree in fire administration from Fayetteville State University. Chief Hardison holds a variety of fire certifications. And at this time, it's with a great honor to be able to swear you in as the fire chief of the city of Jacksonville. If you would repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jerry Hardison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be vigilant and alert.
That I will be vigilant and alert.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As a fire chief.
As a fire chief.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Fire and emergency services.
Fire and emergency services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As fire chief.
As fire chief.
Of the city of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the city of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my skills.
Of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, chief.
I will be good. Here, help me. Can you help me?
Feel free to come up closer. Okay. I have no idea how this goes. Not a police department, I want to fire.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to make a promotion in the police department. And I'd like to invite Josh Porter and his family or any friends that you brought with you, Josh, tonight to come up, stand, stand with you. He's your family, yeah. Detective Josh Porter, I'll say your full name, Joshua H. Porter, grew up in central Ohio, graduating from Urbana High School in 1997. He enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 1999, serving at Camp Lejeune. Upon his honorable discharge in 2003, he returned to Ohio to attend Columbus State Community College. He graduated in 2006 with an Associate of Arts degree. Joshua returned to East Carolina, Eastern North Carolina to live and work. He felt the need to continue serving and joined JPD in 2009 as a police train, police officer trainee. He completed basic law enforcement training in 2009 at Brunswick Community College and was sworn as a police officer in January of 2010. He served as a patrol officer until 2011, when he was assigned to the department's community response team. In 2012, Detective Porter was assigned to Special Operations Division as a detective. In 2013, Detective Porter was assigned to the United States Drug Enforcement Administration Task Force in Wilmington, North Carolina. While at DEA, Detective Porter assisted his team with investigating high-level drug traffickers who were responsible for flooding the United States with an array of illegal drugs. Detective Porter completed his assignment at DEA, returning to the Special Operations Division in January of 2017. He holds the intermediate law enforcement certificate and has a, has been a member of the JPD tactical team since 2012. Chris, you're going to hold the Bible for him, okay? And if you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joshua H. Porter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
Of the city of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services, Jacksonville, Jacksonville Police Department. Somebody gave me the wrong script here, okay? Of the Jacksonville Police Department.
Of the city of Jacksonville Police Department.
Kind of falls under the same big public safety thing, okay? That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a sergeant.
As a sergeant.
Of the Jacksonville Police Department.
Of the Jacksonville Police Department.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Just pointed out to me, I have noticed, but there's a lot of our public safety folks that have come out tonight to see Chief Hardison be sworn in as the new fire chief and also Josh being sworn in as a sergeant. Thank you all for coming out, taking time out. I know some of you are off-duty, some of you are on-duty, but thank you for taking the time to show your, your support for your fellow, your brother. Thank you. Okay, now this is the part of the meeting where I'm going to take a few seconds myself. I'm going to read this, and while I'm reading this, if y'all want to scat, you can, you stay if you want to. Hey, Brian. How are you, buddy?
How are you, my friend?
Hey, Brian.
How's it going?
Good.
Hi, Brian.
You sure?
You from out the back over there?
Yeah.
I'm on the chair.
I hope so.
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 That's his grandchild.
Grandchild.
That's his daughter.
Was that his daughter?
He brings him in the shop.
Verbatim off that page and see what happened there.
Well, I mean.
That's what happens when you get old, Carmen. I remember, I don't want to look at the paper.
What did she say?
Something about the 50s, I don't know.
Get old isn't for sissy.
He ought to know.
You are so right.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started here. We're going to do our first section of public comments reserved for the meeting. I have had no one sign up. There's the sheet, there's no names on it. Of course, sometimes it might get taken up a little bit early, so if there's anyone present that wishes to speak that didn't get a chance to sign the sheet, please indicate by raising your hand, and I'll give you some time to speak. I don't see any tinker or something, I'm just going to slide this to the back here. And we're going to go now to adoption of some minutes. And we have some minutes from the January 2nd, 2018 workshop. Need a motion. Move the adoption of the minutes for the January 2nd, 2018 workshop meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed. All right, so we have a few public hearings this evening, and we're going to get started on that. Make sure I'm not skipping anything. Number one, here's a public hearing. This is on a street closing on Forest Avenue. And Mr. Carter, you're going to present this item, and I'll give it to you.
This is the closing of Forest Avenue, which is an unconstructed facility as shown here on the map in front of you that's parallel to South Marine Boulevard. Pine Street is the emergency access or ingress and ingress for our public worksite over there. And to the, for the entrances to the public worksite, of course, you've got the AutoZone, and then properties that are owned by Bill and Susan Terrell. This street has never been opened up. Mike Pageant made an application to abandon not only the section that I believe he has under contract, but the remaining section there. And we have put the notice in the paper four times and had it published. And tonight, it's required by law that you have a public hearing to see if there's any objection to the closing. And if not, the staff's recommendation is to move forward with the closing of this street. Again, it's never been opened up, and it's not any access for anyone in that area. Be glad to try to answer any questions. Yes, sir. It's our understanding, been talking to our Development Services, that this parcel that abuts Bill and Susan Terrell's property is under contract and will become an Arby's.
Thank you. So we're, I take it that we get into the public services complex where, on this?
No, that's the emergency access. When you get into it, that's what I'm thinking. That's our entrance and exit. The other is just, so if that were to be blocked or something, we'd have an access. We have an easement there. It's a non-exclusive easement that the family gave us, and that was, again, unopened. And that is a gravelled roadway there for us to have kind of an emergency.
So that Forest Avenue has no impact on us whatsoever?
Not at all.
Any other questions?
How did it come to be designated a street?
It was platted that way many years ago.
From one of the previous owners or something like that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. At this time, we're required to have a public hearing on this matter, and I will recess the regular council meeting at this time. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this street closing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, reconvene the regular council meeting. Council, you're being asked to consider the resolution of street closing.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution of a street closing order.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing, and let me get this open here. This is a public hearing on the Unified Development Ordinance text amendment requested by Niche Motorsports. It's amendments to certain areas of the UDO. And Ryan King will be presenting this item. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Back in November, representatives from, I'm not sure if the mayor got it correct or if it's Niche Motorsports. Either way, they reached out to staff about the possibility of opening up a business in our downtown district, specifically as it relates to automotive preservation and restoration activities. Upon reviewing of the Unified Development Ordinance, we realized that the uses that they were seeking were not allowed in the Unified Development Ordinance. So as with any code, a citizen can make application, which they did, to request that you consider amending the code. And basically, what staff has prepared before you tonight is two amendments. One, that meets the intent of the applicant, since they made the request. And a second one, that is a request that staff modified that we basically could support the amendment. So the applicant's request, we are not supporting the amendment. And the primary reason is that it's too industrial. The uses would be too industrial-like. The uses are already in the use table and are not permitted within the downtown area. And, but we believe that there were some aspects of their business proposal that we could support, thus the reason for the two parts. So the first part I'll talk to you tonight is what the applicant is requesting, which is found in Attachment A. And that would be to revise the use table by creating a new use, automotive preservation or restoration. Along with that, we would have to create a definition, which is a premises where used passenger automobiles, motorcycles, trailers, or light trucks are either preserved, which is keeping original components, or restored to a light-new condition. Along with that, in our Unified Development Ordinance, which was new back in 2014, we have used specific standards. And that's basically specific regulations, restrictions, buffers, things of that nature, as it relates to specific uses versus all of the uses found in the Unified Development Ordinance. So we worked with the applicant on trying to come up with some use-specific standards that would lessen the impacts of the neighborhood or the downtown district. And through our discussions, all of these that you see before you in Attachment A, the applicant has agreed upon, which is all of the work would basically occur within an enclosed building. That's the first thing. The second piece would be that any temporary storage of vehicles would be allowed outside of the building, provided it was not more than 20%. And it would have to be behind or to the side of the building and within an eight-foot fence or wall. And the materials would have to be the same as the primary structure. So if you had a brick building, you'd have to have an eight-foot-tall brick wall. And the outside area could be used for storage, capped at 20%. Basically, they would not be able to store vehicles for a source of parts. In some places, they basically take, get an old car, and then start using the parts from that vehicle. They wouldn't be able to keep those cars for kind of a breakdown for parts. Because there's a lot of buildings that share common walls and are close together in the downtown area, we worked with them to try to come up with some sort of a separation between units when there's a common wall. And the proposal before you tonight would be that there would be a 30-foot separation between workspace and a common wall. So if you've got tenants on either side, there would be 30 feet on each side. Or if you had a tenant on one side of you, you'd have to shift it 30 feet as it relates to the restoration-type activities. If you're in a standalone building, then you wouldn't have to worry about that 30-foot separation because you don't have that common wall. We also wanted to make sure that we kept the area that could be used for the reservation and preservation to a maximum of 40% of the building space. So up to 40% for the fabrication, parts, automotive bays or similar areas. And the remaining 60% could be used for other areas such as retail, showroom, office space, things of that nature. Another provision that we wanted to, that we talked with them about is vehicles being maintained on-site, being owned by the business, and that they be kept inside or within the storage lot. So there's some redundancy there. But the biggest thing is we want them inside the building or in the storage lot, not displayed on the streets, sidewalks, or their own area if they have an outside area. Some other things that would be prohibited would be major paint and bodywork. And the preservation and restoration work on vehicles not owned by the business is prohibited. So that is all of the standards that would go into play that's found before you tonight in Attachment A, which the applicant has requested and is agreeable to all of those standards. And before going further, Mr. Jamie Ray is here on behalf of Niche Motorsports. And during the public hearing comment session, I'm sure that he will be available, or he will likely share with you part of the business plan and also be available for questions. So one of the things that we were concerned with is, you know, like I mentioned before, the major work on vehicles. And we believe that there was probably a good use of having motorcycle sales in downtown. And with motorcycle sales, a lot of times you'll see the ATVs or the jet skis. So we basically, this before you, right now, is what you will find in Attachment B. So this is what staff is supporting, staff recommends. So basically, breaking out the automobile sales and rentals definition, we're going to split it apart, revise the definition and create a new one, which you see before you on the screen. And we would also create use-specific standards. A lot of these are similar. All the work would be with inside an enclosed building, the 20% outside storage area with the same building. The fence be built out of the same facade as the primary building. That no motorcycles, ATVs, or jet skis be stored for parts. That there be a 30-foot separation for work areas when a common wall exists. And likewise, the 40-60 split with the other. Likewise, the major paint and body work being prohibited, and the preservation and restoration work on vehicles not owned by the business is prohibited. So to kind of sum it up, you've got auto and motorcycles in their request, staff supporting motorcycles only. And the idea is that the amount of preservation and restoration would be lessened with motorcycles versus automobiles. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. I'm not sure if Mr. Carter or Dr. Wood would like to add anything at this time.
Mr. Carter, you want to add anything? How do you define major paint and body work?
That would be, that would be a subjective definition at this time. It is not currently written within the Unified Development Ordinance.
And in terms of storage, what is 20% of the lot size? In square feet, is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Ryan, did you make this presentation to the planning board?
Yes, sir.
With the staff and the applicants?
Yes, sir. And planning board recommended Attachment A, unlike staff's recommendation, which was B.
Ryan, while I appreciate, I mean, obviously, staff took some time to try to make it work. What I see is a situation where there's a lot of wording that has to be policed. Major versus minor, 20%, what defines 20%? You know, a 30-foot buffer between an adjoining wall. Well, you have an adjoining wall, the building, this particular building, I think maybe, what, 50 feet at max width? So the 20% would be like, it just, I'm just not sure that these are the correct uses for that downtown redevelopment. I mean, I appreciate what you've done, obviously, is trying to make something work, and that's commendable. But it just really leaves a lot of percentages to be policed by somebody should those, and it's not about this particular business, because as we know, he could be there two years, five years. Then the wording is defined for future renters or what have you. The uses will be there forever. So that's my concern. There's a lot of open-ended policing that we would be having to do, should, you know, what defines major, you know, body work? Is it a painting of a helmet or a painting of a quarter panel? You know, I don't know. But somebody will have to define that. And if it goes over, then we're going to have to try to do something about it. And then when we do something about it, we get ourselves involved in litigation that we don't really need to be involved with, in my opinion. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And when an applicant requests an amendment, you know, we, like you said, we try to work with them to kind of come up with a solution. You know, there's another alternative, and that would be to present a use-table amendment to change slash, which is prohibited, for paint and body shops, and make it a P for permitted, or S for special in the downtown. And we didn't feel like that was the way to go either, so. But in theory, that's kind of what their request is. It's kind of another way to allow the paint and body and the automotive part installations in the downtown area.
Thank you. Other questions? We're required to hold a public hearing in this matter. This time, we recess the regular council meeting, open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishes to speak? Yes, sir. Please approach to the dice and give your name and address, please, for the clerk.
Jamie Ray. Jamie Ray, Jacksonville native. I'm also a Stevenson Motorsports employee currently. Been with Stevenson Motorsports for an extended period of time. And I'm also a partner and owner of Niche Motorsports. And we're looking to bring our business to the downtown area. Again, I understand, and Ryan has done a great job working with us. I think that we've changed our business model to try to comply as best we can with Ryan. And I appreciate the meeting we had last week. We, Niche Motorsports, are looking at doing high-end automotive restorations and sales out of the downtown area. We don't want, we don't want to do a large volume of low-end cars because everybody does that on the street corner in Jacksonville. We're looking at 50,000 to $125,000 cars, six to 12 cars a year. Talking motorcycles, we're not looking at sport bikes. We're not looking at a great deal of motorcycles. We're looking at BSAs, Triumphs, Ducati, higher-end MotoGucci motorcycles, lower volume, higher-end clientele. The building that we're looking at is perfect. It's a building that needs restoration. It's a building that my business partner owns. We're both motorsports enthusiasts. We're not looking at doing any paint and body work on-site. We're going to see if we can contract that work out to paint and body work contractors in the Anzlo County area, as well as all of our other large mechanical activities. We do need, inside of the facility, we need the ability to be able to disassemble and reassemble said vehicle, whether it's a said vehicle, whether it's a car, a motorcycle. Honestly, I, I appreciate the effort on the planning department staff to try to make the motorcycles, jet skis and ATVs work. But that's just not our scope. I feel like, I feel like if we concentrated on motorcycles, jet skis and ATVs, we would have a large volume and it would, that, that just wouldn't fit our business plan and it wouldn't bring the revenue that we need. Also, it's not the market that we're looking for. I prefer not to work on an ATV. I'd prefer not to work on every motorcycle that somebody pushed in the shop. And again, we're not working on individual motorcycles and ATVs. It would be items that we own. We go out and we purchase. Currently, I'll give you two examples. We have a 1962 Corvette, that's a frame-off restoration we currently own. A 1964 Corvette, that's a frame-off restoration that we currently own. Those will be assembled in-house. The 62 will probably be a $100,000 car. The 64 will probably be in the $85,000 range. We're looking for clientele that are willing to buy the car, willing to come in and buy the motorcycle and spend the money here. And we're also looking to be part of the revitalization of the downtown area. As a Jacksonville native, you know, I've heard plenty of stories of, of my, my mom and dad, my grandparents spent a lot of time in the downtown area. I want to see it revitalized. I think if we take this 10,500 square feet that we're working with, and there is a, there's a large divider, our showroom's going to be in a 30-foot wide, 70, 75-foot deep showroom area with skylights. Our hard-working area where the mechanicals will happen will be on a barriered wall. So there'll be a 30-foot barrier or a sound barrier like we discussed. And then our mechanicals will happen in a 25-foot wide by 75-foot deep area, and then an additional bay. Everything that we do will be inside. I, I appreciate the generous 20%. That's going to be on the backside. The only reason I think that number works is because we have off-site storage. As you know, working for Stevenson Motorsports, I've been pretty privileged for, for quite a few years. Had the opportunity to work under and on Mr. Stevenson's personal vehicles and his personal race car. So I really think that I can bring a professionalism to the downtown area that'll work. We had the support of the city council members last week. Mr. Warden, I believe you were there. Some really good questions were presented, and we had the opportunity to answer those. I'd really like, and I would entertain any questions you have now. Anything that would help propel this forward because we really want to make sure we stay in the Jacksonville area. We have more opportunities than I could count to be in the county, but we really want to be in the downtown area. And I, I just don't know, you know, if there's anything I can do to, to answer any questions you might have.
You mentioned, you mentioned you wouldn't be adverse to prohibition against bodywork and painting.
Honestly, I'd prefer not to do any paint and bodywork in-house. I've done that type of work before. And I'll be, it's, it's a work that I'd rather have somebody else do. It's, it's not a super clean work. It's not a, it's not a fit and finish work. And it's something that an artisan needs to do, somebody who's skilled, not somebody who's gonna, who's gonna waste my own time and, and cost myself money.
So your business model is predicated on retail sales?
Yes, sir.
Of vehicles, motorcycles? Was jet skis part of your idea?
No, jet skis weren't part of my idea. I think they were, I think they were lumped in, and no offense, Ryan, I don't want to put work in your mouth. I think they were lumped in because they would be associated. And I think the motorcycles, when you think about it, and, and Ryan used an example last week, you think of Lejeune Motorsports, old Lejeune Honda just down on the left.
Right.
You think about that type of power sports, motorsports, and you think, well, they have jet skis, side-by-sides, ATVs, and by the way, they have motorcycles. We're not really looking at any kind of jet skis, any type of ATVs, just motorcycles and automobiles.
I want questions. Yes.
Be doing regarding engine work?
Well, fortunate for us, we can, we can build and restore all the engine work in-house in what we call a clean room. And that room would just basically be a tear-down reassembly room. Fortunately, most of our engines that we install will probably be crate engines. And there'll be engines that are, that are purchased outside from, let's say, Ford Performance, Roush Motorsports, and have those.
Ford?
Ford Performance. It's, it's, just using as an example. bowtie has their own and, and Mopar as well, Chrysler. But we would buy those outright and be able to install those on site. What's your, what would be your primary concern? Just the cleanliness of it or?
I think the, I think that the concern that, let me do this differently. When we first talked with another gentleman, not with you, but with another gentleman.
Kevin Holmes.
Yeah, with Kevin Holmes. It was about something that was primarily motorcycles. And when you look at downtown Jacksonville, especially the four blocks that we're working on, we don't have a lot of things that really attract people to come down here. We've been very fortunate to have several anchors, such as the drugstore. We've been very fortunate that the organic market is now bringing folks down. And the Bicycle Gallery has certainly brought a, a lot of younger people down. If we're ever going to have restaurants in this four-block area, we also have to have some things of what I'm going to call interest that will make people want to come down here. So the original concept was about motorcycles. And I have to admit, I was really hesitant about motorcycles from noise standpoint and so forth. But I also recognized that if we're going to attract the younger crowd down here, restoring motorcycles and having a showroom and having glass front where you could look in and see these things, you know, maybe that's a step in the right direction. When cars became a part of it, the difficulty that the staff has from the, from the application is filed is everything, your first name again?
James.
That, that James was asking, you know, it sounds great. The only problem is, once it gets into the code, then, you know, Richard's Automotive can come in and it can be completely different than what he's describing. If we could find a way to do exactly what James is talking about, it could be a draw and it could fit. But the difficulty there is, you know, regulations, it's not a science, it's an art. And what we're trying to do is create art here that will benefit the downtown long-term, help you accomplish what you want, but it doesn't open the door to all of the other things that the art we're creating could allow. So from a staff standpoint, as you can see, we've really had a difficult time in that we didn't just come up and say, we're denying this 100%. Maybe the thing to do, and, and I have to admit, you know, we've been working on this now for months, but if it's worth the effort, we ought to keep working on it. Maybe what we should do is say that we're going to make this a special use permit, not an automatic right, and that we work further on some of the standards to try to, to get this where what James wants to do can be accomplished, but it gives us enough protection that not just anyone can walk in, you know, three doors down the street and create something that we didn't intend to. Now, I apologize for kind of, you know, muddling through this, but that's, that's the dilemma that the staff has had.
And I, and I understand, I understand exactly where you're coming from, Dr. Wood. Because I personally don't want to see the downtown area lessened by the inappropriate business. But at the same time, you know, to give you some personal background, you know, several years and 30 pounds ago, I was a pretty competitive motorcycle road racer. And I've worked with Bicycle Gallery to stay in shape and, and appreciate their business and can hold hands with businesses like that in the area to try to make this more viable. Now, in my travels doing that and my travels with Stevenson Motorsports as a competitive mechanic and logistics, I can, I can tell you that I've seen these type of business models in the downtown area of Winchester. I've seen them in Monterey. And they, and they work. And, and they bring the community together, and they also make other businesses around them more viable. My end goal is to be in a very pleasant building, something that fits, fits the business model, that whenever I set the 1964 Corvette in there with the brick, with the brick wall in the background, it just looks right. It looks like something picturesque you really want, you know, you really want to be a part of. And we also are working with the Porsche Club of America. We'll be working with the Distinguished Gentlemen's Club. It's a, it's a, an awareness group. We'll be doing a lot of charity-type rides. We'll be doing a lot of Cars and Coffee-type gatherings, you know, where we can bring some, bring some viable business to the downtown area. Above and beyond anything else, I, I want to be policed. I want, I want to be fined if we leave a, if we leave a car outside. We're not going to have any customer cars. It'll be our vehicles and our motorcycles. So I welcome, I welcome being policed. I understand where you come from. I just want to be accountable and I want to have the opportunity.
I don't think anybody up here has any doubt that you're sincere about, you know, your feelings towards the downtown. But I think probably what needs to be done is, like you say, maybe you might need to take some more time and muddle through this a little bit more to make sure that, you know, we don't create a situation in the future, you know, after Mr. Ray's gone and some other business comes in, what are we going to be, what are we going to be dealing with?
John, how do you think we ought to handle this?
Ryan, this is not a rezone, so there's not a prohibition. Would y'all rather work with the documents you have, that is, your Exhibit B, and maybe just keep this hearing open? And y'all take it and work to, to pare it down? Or do you want to get rid of this and start all over again? I don't know where y'all are kind of coming from based on the council.
I don't think we need to do it anymore.
I don't think it's a good idea to, to change the use code. If we're going to do something like this, we really ought, really ought to set it up as a special use permit. And I do apologize that I didn't think about this earlier. We need to figure out what's the best way to have the protection we need for the downtown while still doing something that could really help the downtown. And I think, you know, if there is no prohibition, you can certainly continue this and let us see what we could do as far as a different way to accomplish it. Or you could deny it and we work on it a different way, or you could approve it, whichever you want to do.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm inclined to go with Exhibit A or A plan because I feel like if we're truly sincere about getting downtown redeveloped, we've got to maybe take some risks. That what people have to overcome in downtown is the lack, the dearth, the absence of foot traffic. Whatever goes in there that's going to be successful is going to have to generate its own attraction. And I feel like this is a type of thing that is unique enough that could do that possibly. I mean, I, I think that, you know, being concerned about somebody coming two doors down and opening up a, a garage is maybe very remote because they're going to have to need the resources. There's not many applicable facilities that are sitting there available. I mean, you know, I think we say we want it so bad, but then we get an opportunity and we get scared or, or something.
Well, I don't know that it's being scared. I think it's being responsible in terms of how we allow uses. I mean, that's the whole point of having zoning and UDOs. I mean, you have the museum going right across the street. I think we have some obligation to ensure the, the continuity of the street. And not that this would take away from it. It's not about your business. It is, it is, it's about wording, it's about policing, it's about enforcement. And I think you can accomplish, and Jerry and I were just talking for a moment, a special use would accomplish everything that you want to do with the restrictions that allow us to have in place so that we're protected.
If you go to a special use, then you're going to have to change the UDO, right, to allow a special use. Then you're going to have to require a site plan, et cetera, from the applicant. I mean, you're just throwing a whole nother bailiwick. Another obstacle to this gentleman's, you know, attempt to open a business in our downtown district. I feel like we're, we're contradicting ourselves.
What would be the drawbacks in amending the language of this following the gentleman's argument about prohibiting restoration or limiting restoration only to vehicles and motorcycles and not allowing bodywork and painting?
You've already got that in there.
We don't have that in there.
His, his, his proposal restricts to their ownership only. You can't take your vehicle, your, your motorcycle or, or old car and let them work on it. Not under what he's proposed, what they're proposing under Attachment A. It is owned by that company right there. They're only working on their own things. And I consider this a boutique type of operation, not a, not a retail type of business where they're trying, or service business where they're working on things.
I'm not, I'm not in disagreement with you. I'm just looking to expedite this matter by changing the language as we see it here, accepting his.
It's already on, it's already there, as I understand.
And major bodywork requires frame machines, welders. Major painting requires a booth. I mean, there's a whole nother, you know, like I said, that's like getting in the.
Well, if they're restoration, they're going to have that equipment anyway.
I want to hear from Ryan real quickly.
So one item that seems to be a concern with council, and likewise it was with staff. And if the applicant doesn't object to this, this is one part of kind of backing into this. You know, I would say that you change six, which says major painting prohibited, to just say paint and bodywork is prohibited.
That's exactly what I'm saying, what you said.
Amendment that may help.
He can have to do, he can have to do a little bit. I mean, he may have to do a little bit of touch-up or something. We're saying no paint?
An item of concern and, and how to define and the policing aspect?
Let's hear what he has to say.
You don't mind, let me jump in. And Ryan, I appreciate that. And actually, can you, can you hang out for one second? Ryan's been great.
Get closer to the mic.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'm, I'm kind of out, so. Ryan's been great. And, and being able to work this verbiage, verbiage has really helped us because I think we've worked with you. As far as major paint and bodywork, we're not going to do, we're not going to do any paint on site. Like I said before, it's a professional's job. A lot of people will paint, but in the end, you don't get the product that you want. So as far as major paint and bodywork, no, we wouldn't do that on site. Any type of work that we would do would be the mechanical work. For anybody who's, you know, who watches, let's say, the Velocity Channel and you see a lot of restorations happen, if you notice, those restorations are usually disassembled and then reassembled in one location. And then all the paint and bodywork is sent somewhere else, and that's our goal. And again, Mr. Warden, I think you're absolutely right, and you bring a great point in that we're going to own all the vehicles. It's not going to be a service facility. And I think that's, that's where Ryan has, has given us the opportunity to, to be dynamic and to change our business model and make this fit.
Originally, the idea was to do work on the vehicles.
That's right.
Can, can that language be modified or added to?
Owner of.
In the.
Owner of their vehicle.
It's just got to be owned by the business.
That's right. Mr. Jackson, did I answer that question? I, I don't know if I turned it around it.
Well, you know, at first I was.
I apologize.
I was concerned about the whole idea of no major paint and bodywork, you know, and what that actually meant. I mean, like Mr. Warden say, I understand also the need to draw in what Mr. Thomas said, to draw, you know, more traffic down there, especially, say, with the youngest city in America with average age is 22 and a half.
That's right.
So I understand that. I just wouldn't want to run into an issue, and you all can help me work through this, be in the near fight here, concerning, you know, someone in the future or if anything like that happened. I hear what you're saying. I understand where you're coming from. But I'm just trying to get a better hold on how we could deal with this going forward. But I'm just trying to get a better hold on how we could deal with this going forward.
How protected are we, John, with this?
John won't, John won't come in. He's a lawyer. Again, Ryan has studied these two documents, A and B. A being what the applicants want and B is what city staff has recommended. Under A, as Mr. Warden has pointed out, and I'll just go over a couple of things, it clearly says that to vehicles maintained on-site for the purpose of the preservation, restoration, or own, shall be only those owned by the business, kept either inside an enclosed building or within the allowed storage lot. There, number six, as Ryan points out, says major paint and bodywork is prohibited. I mean, you get into interpretations of what's major minor and somebody's going to, you know, if it gets, anyway, that's, I'm going by the language. Preservation, restoration work on vehicles not owned by the business is prohibited. That's in their A, as pointed out. The other y'all have kind of talked about, 40% of the, the work areas, 40%, the remaining 16 would be your showroom, retail of apparel, office and so forth. So, you've got 40%. And even with that 40%, you've got to have that 30% separation.
Thirty foot, yes, sir.
So, you've indicated to council, and I've not measured the building or anything, but that you're talking about a 75 by 25-foot area for any restoration that you would do after you take off the 30 feet, correct? That's what you represented.
Yes, sir. And then there's, there's an additional, there's a small additional portion, but it's still under 40%. And I think, I think what we're trying to paint here is a picture of us lessening our, us, our business increasing our retail area as the attraction and lessening and then limiting the amount of, of work, let's say. That way, the work happens off-site and the work only happens to the vehicles that we own. We help, we hold the titles and we hold those for resale.
Let me ask a question, see if we move forward. You, I believe you have already testified to the council that you'd have no problem simply saying paint and bodywork is prohibited. Is that correct?
That's correct.
This is your petition that you have filed. Secondly, all the standards that are in here are the standards that you agreed to. So, it's not will they work, are they reasonable? You're testifying to the council, these will work on your application.
They will work on our application because we changed our business model to make it happen.
Okay. Now, the other thing is, are you willing to change the language where the only thing that can be worked on here, and it's not the, John, if you'll go back now, to the, somewhere it listed the type, you know, I know Ryan, in B, it says motorcycles, jet skis, whatever, whatever. Under A, what is it that he's allowed to work on here?
Under A, it would be everything that is defined in automotive.
Sales and services.
No, it would be automotive preservation and restoration. So, it's any passenger automobile, motorcycle, trailer or light truck by definition. And that's found at, right above the mayor and the clerk's signature of Attachment A under 9.4 definitions.
Okay, let me look at that for just a second. Okay. The definition would be premises where used passenger automobiles, motorcycles, trailers or light trucks are either preserved, keeping original components or restored, returned to like new. So, that definition does not include jet skis. Why does it include trailers?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Okay. We didn't include trailers. I think, I think that Ryan lumped those in.
But if council wanted to, you know, it's your, it's your petition. So, if you're saying to council, we'll eliminate trailers, jet skis are not included, so all you're limiting to are used passenger automobiles, motorcycles and light trucks.
I'd be fine with that.
Is that acceptable to you?
We would, we would have a trailer on-site on occasion, but it wouldn't be something for restoration and/or, it would just be for use and it would be stored off-site whenever it's not in use. I just want to, I just want to say that out loud.
You could certainly bring the vehicle in on a trailer, offload it and then move the trailer on.
That's right, yes, sir. I just want to say that out loud.
Or keep it in the storage lot. The only other thing that I would ask is, are you going to have new vehicles? Are these all going to be used?
They're all going to be used.
Okay.
We don't want to.
Put that into a language so we can make a, make a action on it, take action.
Motion would be to approve the proposed.
I can say.
Text Amendment A with the 9.4 definition, automotive preservation, restoration, from that section, striking the word trailers. Everything else would remain the same.
And?
And in the standards.
Number six. You would strike major and it would state paint and bodywork is prohibited.
Okay. Is that the motion, Mr. Bennett?
I would make that motion.
Well, we got to close the public hearing first. We never have. Let's close the public hearing. Is there anyone else wishes to speak?
Will you close the public hearing? Jamie, this is your petition. Are you in agreement with all of the changes that we're proposing?
I am.
Good enough for me. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter? All right. Close the public hearing. Council, you're being asked to.
I would, I would approve, make a motion to approve the text amendment requested by Niche Motorsports as explained by the attorney using the applicant's proposal, A with the modifications of language as so reported by the attorney.
Just to repeat that, which to repeat that, would strike the word major on number six. And so, it would say paint and bodywork is prohibited and would strike the word on the definitions right before the mayor and the clerk's signature, the automotive preservation restor, would strike the word trailers. Everything else would remain the same.
If you hadn't interrupted me, I was going to say that.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
They're, they're not going to work on trailers.
No.
They can have a trailer.
They can have a trailer if they need to bring a bike on or something, but not work on.
Is that acceptable?
Second.
The second was here. Any further discussion on this matter? Here, none all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
This number making some.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Congratulations and good luck.
Yep, congratulations.
Thank you. I do want to commend Ryan for the work that he did to try to find a way to accommodate this and we will see how it works and wish him well.
Good job, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. The next item we have is agenda item number three in this Tourism Development Authority appointment. Says an appointment is needed for a vacant seat on the Jacksonville Tourism Development Authority. The vacancy must be filled by someone who is affiliated with a facility that collects the occupancy tax. And the vacant seat had been held by Melody York since the authority was formed. She resigned when she left the facility that was collecting tax in Jacksonville and therefore she's no longer eligible for the seat. The area director for sales and marketing for LBA Hospitality, Chris Davis, is being recommended for that seat and he is a member of the Tourism Advisory Board for the Chamber, thus being eligible for qualification of two categories associated with tourism promotion and affiliated with the facilities that collect the tax. So, we're being asked to consider filling that vacant position. And I think the one interested person is Chris Davis. Is this one where we need to look for other nominations or can this just go as it, as it's written?
Should be noted, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Davis would be appointed to fill the unexpired term, which ends June 30th, 2018. So, again, that appointment would come back up if you did it, but you can know, sir. I think that Mr. Davis has been vetted, if you will, by the Mayor Pro Tem and other members of the Tourism Development Authority. And I believe that the Mayor Pro Tem is ready to.
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to, to appoint Mr. Chris Davis to the unexpired term that ends June 30th, 2018. We had interviews with Mr. Davis and he comes very qualified for this position.
Second. We have a motion and second, any other discussion? Here, none all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? That brings us to our reports for the evening. And I'm going to start down with Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have something tonight. I wanted to publicly thank Mayor Pro Tem for his work on the local DOT Transportation Board. You were appointed, I believe, the chairman of the group in 2010 and finished out 2017. So, you served eight years as leading our group. And I think you did a fine job, probably, I'd even say, an outstanding job. You have good vision and, of course, good leadership skills.
Thank you.
I also like how you get people to collaborate. So, thank you for that. We'll miss you. I think you've done a great job for the citizens of not only Jacksonville, but for Onze County in, in what you were able to give guidance and help procure monies and roads and projects and safety improvements, crosswalks and so forth. I think you've done an outstanding job, Ryan.
Thank you.
And I applaud. Bring that up because you've stepped down, your, some of your other civic duties have just not left you much time for, for that and we thank you. And I know Mr. Thomas was appointed in, in your behalf and we, we thank you for what you've done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, I guess on that note, I'll congratulate Mr. Warden for being elected chairman of the.
Big shoes to fill.
And I'm still waiting for the 20 bucks for nomination.
Nomination fee.
Checks in the mail.
Mayor Pro Tem was over.
First of all, thank you. I appreciate that. I know.
Heartfelt.
It, it's, it's crazy how time goes by, but we, we certainly were able to accomplish quite a bit. And we have an excellent team, nothing short of what I've done. So, I think the residents need to be very comfortable in knowing they've got a first-class team here at the city and under Anthony's leadership. So, thank you. The only other thing I have, Mayor, is I'd like to thank Richard and his team over the snowstorm and the tremendous amount of effort and work that the public safety and utilities and everyone, while we were home in heat, they were out doing the work of the citizens. And I think it needs to be noted and recognized. So, I do want to extend that appreciation to you and your team. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Bennett?
I'll have an unwasse report next week, next meeting. We meet Thursday night, which one appears to be a routine agenda. I'll echo Mayor Pro Tem's remarks about the cleanup of public works, police and fire, their efforts. Great job. I hope you're not called upon tomorrow night either. The bad part of this is I've been driving around the city. That storm caused some havoc with our roads, see some huge potholes. Fortunately, not fortunately, most are on state highways, but we've had some severe damage, some of our local roads too, that I'm sure we'll be putting to repair to very shortly. That's all I have.
Mr. Jackson?
Okay. On December 6th, I attended the groundbreaking for the new air traffic control tower at Albert J. Ellis Airport. And that speaks highly to where we're going into the future with the possible expansion of the airport as well as possible commercial ability to bring in business in the future.
Is that a play on words going up high, you said?
Going up high. You caught that. Actually, also on January 13th, in the mayor's stead, I was able to attend the Muffler Point Marine Association Dr. Martin Luther King Ball, a black and white scholarship ball, which they offer scholarships to young, hopefully, young leaders of the future, you know. And my heart really attaches to the Muffler Point Marine Association because I grew up in a neighborhood where many of those men were, actually resided, as I said, there. I was in and out of the houses of a lot of those folks. Those were the arms that were around me. Also, today, I, well, yesterday, I actually attended the ceremony at Coastal Carolina Community College where the keynote speaker was Ms. Clementine Claiborne. And I attended a march downtown as well and program at the DAV where my cousin Mary, Mary Moore, she does that annually. And today, I was actually invited by the Marine Corps Installations East and Marine Corps Base Commander, General Alfred and his staff to kind of just, I just extended myself on what I could do to actually assist and Mr. Ramirez and what educated me, a lot of the way things are going on the base and the great relationship they have with the city of Jacksonville and they look forward to trying to interact with, with them going forward, so.
Great job.
That's, that's it for now.
Thank you. No report for me, other than I can echo what these fellows here said about our folks. Johnny on the spot did a great job. I heard so many complaints from people from up north about our roads not getting cleared enough, getting cleared quick enough. Yep. My thing, my thought about that is we did the best we can. You know, I think, I think we did, I think our, our folks and the state DOT people did a great job of clearing the roads. It was a, it was, it was a big storm, a big storm for, for North Carolina, for eastern North Carolina, something we're just not used to here, you know. It's, you know, when you're not, when you don't face it every year, several times a year, it, it kind of makes you reluctant to spend millions of dollars on equipment that could be used for some other priority that you have. So, you know, to keep that in mind, we get snow, Randy, what, about every seven, 10 years, something like that. So, I think we, we survived, most of us are still here, you know, and made it. I noticed that sanitation picked up really well after everything was cleared up and all. We got everything cleared up. They've had a tough time in sanitation, by the way, you know, with the holidays and everything. They've had to jam everything up in a, in two or three weeks' time, but they did, they've done a great job of getting everything collected. But again, kudos to, to the employees of the city for keeping it running.
One thing I would like to mention before we get into some other things, tonight we do have a young man, Adajewon Ojibowo, who is the president of our youth council. He is shadowing the manager's office and so far, he's been to two of our workshops and council meetings. So, Adajewon, it's good to have you with us tonight. We would like to take a minute to show you just some pictures of, of what your staff has been doing during the snow days. You will notice in these that January 12th, this was not the snow days, but let me talk about this. This is a, a home where a resident had a medical emergency and due to some physical challenges, we were not able to get this person down the stairs. So, using the forces, as you can see, on the left, you have people from facility maintenance. In the back, you have a street forklift. In the front, you have police and fire. And what they did to extricate this person was to build a makeshift platform and they cut the hole that you saw a minute ago in the building and they stuck it through the wall, through that hole, loaded the person upon it and then were, was able to extricate him. That shows you the level of effort that city employees go to, but more importantly, it shows you the teamwork of so many of your departments. That's code enforcement, police, fire, the county EMS, the street department, facility maintenance, all came together on the spur of a moment and within 30, 40 minutes figured out how to address this citizen's need. That's quite a one-city moment, if I've ever seen one. Now, when you move on to the snow event, January 3rd, what you'll see, these are pictures taken by various members of our police department. While I was certainly home, people like Alan Covey and Sergeant Cox, here's Anthony Prins out checking relative to transit. Here's what Riverwalk Cross, Riverwalk Crossing looked like, Ryan King in his area checking things out. Here is Wally Hanson checking some of the issues. Here is an NC State motorist. That's all I can say. But if you notice, here's a private citizen who mailed these in. And again, you can see Billy Lyles at the water plant. We did have some major issues, as I reported to you, at the water plant, but we were able to get those underway and, and functioning. You can see again Sergeant Cox giving reports at 4:00 AM. 6:00 AM Kevin Robhill is out and he's working and documenting. Here's a picture from a private citizen of their own car. Again, Sean Messenowski and then Lieutenant Kellum out there just taking pictures, more pictures of the bypass and another picture of 24. Kim with the media, she was out taking pictures also, City Hall and the Center for Public Safety. Safety, and obviously, the downtown area, a picture by Kevin. Eagle Globe and Anchor with a little bit of snow on it. This is the Vietnam Memorial, the Muffler Point Memorial.
Muffler Point.
And here is the other pictures that you can see. This is, of course, you'll notice the ice that was on the bay. And the train depot. This is Lake Bittner. Ice skaters were allowed there. Now, here is a picture for a calendar. If you'll notice, even though this was on January the 4th, this person is carrying his Christmas tree, he still has the Rudolph red nose on the front of his vehicle, and if that's not a postcard for Jacksonville, I'm not sure I've ever seen one. That was great.
You got a good deal on the tree there.
Here's Jacksonville Parkway at 10 o'clock in the morning, and there's Melvin Bland looking at his car, trying to figure out how to get to the radio station. And here are the kids down at Surgeon City sledding on that hill.
Did they have a lot of kids go down there?
They had a lot of kids down there. They interfered with my sled a number of times, Mayor. Now, service to our citizens, let's look at some of the things your employees did. Obviously, the street department was out working, sanding and scraping. Here is a gentleman that is waiting for the bus on January the 4th. Unfortunately, James missed the announcement that the bus was not going to run. But let me tell you what two of your employees did. When they saw him at 8:00 AM, they stopped, picked him up, and personally took him to work at the Dollar, Green Dollar, Dollar General. Dollar Tree. Okay. But that's what you call one city, your employees taking care of their citizens. Vehicle or mishaps. There were a few. Some a little more serious than others. This was an off-road vehicle that didn't realize it was. Over on Huff Drive. Now, here is one of your officers, David Peck, who actually is pushing this car to try to get it back on the road system. And if you notice, we had 94 motorists decised and 85 accidents or wrecks. That is two and a half times on accidents and wrecks, two and a half times more accident and wrecks during the 12-hour shifts than you have on clear days. So if people don't understand stay at home and don't drive, they're the statistics. Out on the street, here are some of your street people working to clear driveways and The plows, and as we've said to you, we're going to be ordering a couple of more and equipping some of our trucks so we can do a little better job. Facility maintenance, there's one of the plows working. There's a motor grader working. And there's one of our great operators in the street department, and another one. Now, it says Wally Hanson, those were just taken by Wally Hanson. Now, John Oathouse took these pictures. So John sent these in for us. Here's one of our spreaders. There's our motor grader working over in Brenmar. Front end loader in Brenmar. One of the plows. Altogether, a great one-city moment. The last thing I would like to mention is that on February 5th at 4:00 PM, we will be having a joint session with the County Commission out at the County Commission offices. The agenda will be posted shortly. It is open to the public, even though there won't be public comment, but that's 4:00 PM, February 5th. On February 6th, instead of having a workshop, in this chamber, we will have basically a report to the people from the mayor and you as a council and staff, where we will review some of the highlights of 2017's budget and look at some of the programs and opportunities coming up. At the end of that session, there will be basically an open mic where citizens can make comments and make suggestions about how their city government can improve its services. With that, Mayor and council, we always thank you for your leadership and your dedication to this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Do you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Close.
All right. We saw Mike off.